Okay. I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting for Tuesday, August 17th to order at 6:30 PM. First on the agenda is public comments. Eric DeRozier.
So we received this after the agenda was put out, but we wanted to make sure that it was read to you guys. We received a thank you letter from the folks at Wilmington Old Home Week, and I just want to share it with you quickly. It says, "Thank you for supporting Wilmington-Vermont Old Home Week 2021. Your contribution of $1,500 will help make a successful and memorable event. Consciously, Mary K. Janela of the Wilmington Old Home Week."
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I see that Dan and Joe are joining us virtually tonight. I'd like to rearrange the agenda a little bit based on Rich Warner, who's going to be here for a couple of different items, needs to get to Wardsboro for a meeting as well. So if we could, if it's okay with the rest of the board, I'd like to flip unfinished business and new business. That way we can get through that and he can get out of here. And then if he comes back in time, he would like to be involved in a part of the highway executive session, I guess contractual it would be. So is everybody okay with those additions?
It's fine with me.
Thank you.
Flip-flopping new business and unfinished business.
And then adding Rich to a contractual under highway if he makes it back from Wardsboro. And that would be before the second part, and it would be very quick.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you okay with that? Who said that? Dan?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Any other public comments? All right, hearing none, we'll jump into the highway. Travis, update on the Hathaway Trail.
Hathaway Trail, couple of things. The water issue with the 18 Loop Up Road is unresolved. We're going to take care of it. Tim has went up and done some work, but I feel like I'm going to put a bunch of material down just to take care of some of the washing. Second part of the Hathaway Trail thing, I got a group that contacted me that's wanting to speak with the board and help out with an erosion control issue we have way on the upper part of the trail. So if you guys don't mind taking a minute or two to listen to what Scott Amberman has to say about that.
Okay. And Scott is a volunteer?
Yes. It's a nonprofit that wants to help out erosion and whatnot on town trails.
Okay. Scott, can you introduce yourself a little?
Sure. I'm Scott. I'm with Go Fox Adventures, but I'm acting as an ambassador for Tread Lightly, which is a 501(c)(3) organization. It was originally started by the U.S. Forest Service, but we handle things like trail cleanups and stewardship projects, and especially education for ethical outdoor recreation. So essentially, it's like a two-pronged thing. We like to take care of any kind of damage and things that are already there, but also educate people to keep from doing that type of thing in the future. The problem that we're talking about on Hathaway Trail is actually a trail erosion issue just because of washout and a waterway that kind of goes through there. And Tread Lightly, I've spoken with the core team in Utah, and they've committed funds to actually help correct that issue and get the trail back to a hard-packed surface so it doesn't continue to erode. I was through there with, on a guided tour with Ron Harrington of Ridgeback Guide Services a little bit earlier this year, and the mud hole there is about four feet deep right now. So it's not, it's passable barely. We had to use winches to get a couple of vehicles through, and it's not too far from being in good shape again, but it is going to need some work. We've got a, we put in a proposal with Tread Lightly, and they've committed funds to correcting.
So what are, besides saying that you guys can do this, what are the commitments? Do you have an agreement that we need to sign? Just what are the requirements around having you do this for us?
Well, with the requirements, I mean, like, obviously, we need to do it with the town's permission. This is something where we're going to need to bring, like, machinery, like, probably an excavator in there, put a culvert underneath the roadway surface, and probably some gravel to mediate the drainage. So we would need permission to do that. But additionally, what we'd like to do, because we have seen some of the signage that's in place on the roadway now, we'd like to add some things about, you know, like fostering some more responsible behavior. We have some signs that we could submit to you, but we'd like to put some signs up saying, you know, respect landowners' rights, you know, make sure you're not leaving any litter behind, don't go off-trail, don't trespass, things that are, you know, sort of educating people on keeping the trail open by not abusing the right to be able to use it. If you give me one second, I actually have. We used this sign, this is actually from, you probably can't even see it.
You've got to undo it.
I got to undo it.
Kind of tip it the other way. Tip it maybe towards us a little.
There we go.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No.
I can send you, I can send you a PDF of what this sign says, but this is, this is a sign that we used in, at a project in Pennsylvania that we did a couple of weeks ago, where we did a ton of trail cleanup and put up signs just reminding people to, you know, behave the way they should, not leave stuff behind, not cause damage to the trail or trees or anyone's property. Because, you know, part of the problem is that people are acting out now and not doing the things they should, and with the uptick in outdoor recreation because of COVID, I'm sure you guys have seen a lot more traffic on the Class 4 roads that you didn't really have before. And if people are visiting from out of state or from out of the area, they need to understand that this is something that, you know, has been there a lot longer than they have, and is going to continue to be there a lot longer than they are, so we need to treat it with the respect that it's deserved.
So what were you thinking as a timeline for this, Scott?
We would ideally like to get it done before the fall, if possible, just to keep it from eroding further, you know, with snow melt and everything like that.
I think that I would have preferred this to come through the Trails Committee first to the board. What do you?
Trails and highway together.
And highway, yes, combo. I mean, it's, it's a trail.
Right. I mean, of the two, I defer to Travis.
Yeah.
I reached out, I reached out to Travis as he was the, as he was the highway manager on the website. That was a kind of a call back for me. I didn't know what the procedure would be.
But are we?
Yes, Sarah.
Are we talking, we're talking about an existing trail that's getting restored. We're not talking about a new trail at all.
No, not cutting a new trail or anything like that. This is, this is doing like an erosion mitigation repair to the trail.
Scott. And this just, this came to your attention because you were out with Ridgeway Tours, or you were?
Yeah, Ridgeback, Ridgeback Guide Service. I came through there. Ron and I have partnered on several trail cleanup and restoration projects in several different states. And this specific one, it seemed like it was, it was a good opportunity to, like, upgrade some of the signage there to let people to know what to do, but also to repair the roadway in a way that makes it last for a lot longer than it will the way it is in its current state. So this was, this was a project that he and I kind of got together on, and we decided to reach out to your town to see if it was something you'd be interested in. Our main goal is to repair this and have these signs put in without any money coming from you guys at all. This is all something, all the costs associated with this would be absorbed by Tread Lightly. If there's something in terms of a permitting fee that needs to be paid to the town, or equipment that we need to get from the town, anything like that, that's, that's all costs that we're, we're willing to absorb. We don't want to have this be anything that comes out of the town's funds at all.
Joe Mahon.
So as I was listening in on that, I think that number one, Vicki, I think this kind of falls under Travis because it's the main trails. It's not a, you know, outside venture trail. I think it's a great idea that if they're willing to pay for it to be fixed and whatever. This also is a snowmobile trail during the wintertime, I assume, so it should improve it for the snowmobilers, too. So it's improving it for multi-use people out there. So if they're going to spend the money, I think they should coordinate with Travis so Travis knows what's going on, because he's going to have the resources to make sure it's being done properly, which the trails wouldn't be with the type of equipment he'll be using.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Paul.
Paul Fisher from the town. So I had to step out for a minute.
Yeah.
Where exactly are we talking about?
Hathaway Trail, upper part, a large four-foot-deep mud hole.
This is the part where it's not a car road anymore, where it's just the trail?
Right.
Is that way?
Yeah, okay.
So I would like something on some letterhead or something, kind of proposing this. It doesn't have to be fancy, but I just, I would like it. I don't know who you guys are, and this kind of, I didn't, wasn't able to do any research on this.
Absolutely. We can, we can handle that for you. I can have somebody from the Tread Lightly core team in Utah reach out to you with, with an exact.
To Jeanette. Do you know Jeanette Eckert? She's our administrative manager here.
I don't. Yeah, Travis could share her information with me, and I can absolutely reach out to both of you.
Good. Sarah?
So, yeah, I was just, I'm going to ask a really, really cynical question.
No, no problem.
Just what's in it for you?
This is, well, not really anything. Ron and I both are doing this on a volunteer basis. Tread Lightly, in terms of a long-term goal, we want to, we want to maintain access to off-highway, you know, off-road roadway systems. So we want, we see a lot of the things that happen in our community of off-roaders, where they do get out and they abuse trailways, or they cause damage to property, or they cause damage to private property. And we're, this is an effort for us personally to give back and sort of repair some of the issues that have been created by our, you know, people that share the hobby with us but not quite our ethics, if that makes any sense. We want to, we want to kind of offset the people that are behaving badly by setting an example for them of the way they should act and the way they should, you know, take care of this system because it's something that can be taken away. Or it, you know, people that look at it as their inalienable right that's not going to go away, those people are part of the problem as well, and we're working to educate them towards understanding that it's something that needs to be taken care of actively, or else it can be taken away.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't realize that that's what the update on Hathaway Trail meant, was that these folks would be here proposing this. Travis did share with me, there correspondence with him, and I would, I would love to request that the Trails Committee be involved in any, any education or any decision-making process or recommendation to you guys. Those trails are used by non-motorized recreational folks as well. The motorized recreation on those trails has been mentioned, most recently by the Snowmobile Club at the, at the Trails Committee meetings. Last year with COVID, it was a lot more of a problem than it was previously. It's not as much of a problem this year with everybody back home and at work. But much like straightening curves on a road allows people to go faster, fixing these problems with a, with a road accessible by four-by-fours invites more four-by-fours. Putting up signs to let people know that, hey, this is open to the public, come on, you know, bring your guide service, it's open for you to use with your four-by-fours, may not be the way we want to go. And I understand the gentleman's points, that, you know, there comes a point when simply ignoring the use, because dealing with it creates more problems than, than it fixes. Eventually, that, that, that method of dealing with this situation becomes unworkable, when you have so many of them out there. Eventually, you have to address it, and you have to open the trails or close the trails to motorized use. It's been talked about before, but it's a huge can of worms in Dover. There's a lot of entrances to that neck of the woods that are in Wardsboro. Those trails go there, some of those trails are Class 4 roads, portions of them not Class 4 trails. They're town trails, legal town trails. Portions of them are not. In order to get to that section, you have to travel on portions that technically are not town trails. They're national forest land. And the Schemobile Trail goes around a couple of sections already, and these four-by-fours are on those sections that are illegal for them to be traveling on as far as the National Forest Service is concerned. When you make the trail tread better, the ATVs go faster. Not only the registered four-by-four vehicles that are okay to drive on the road, but the, but the four-wheeler vehicles, the ATVs, go faster, and then your non-motorized uses suffer. It's a, it's a big can of worms. I'm sure it's a lovely place to do what this gentleman likes to do. And I love, I love, I've watched those machines and think, oh my gosh, I wish I had one of those machines that are awesome, you know? And maybe there is a place for them in Dover on public trails, but that's a huge discussion with a lot of stakeholders involved.
If I may.
Actually, I think that we need to kick this back down to the trails and highway. This really wasn't worn this way, and we're going to spend a lot of time on this, and I think that we need some more background. Obviously, with everything with trails in Dover, it's, there's a lot more to it than, than.
Me too.
Yeah. So I'd like to try to cut this off because it's gone 15 minutes now, and it really isn't part of what, I assume this was an update on our landowner, so, Sarah, do you have something else to say?
I just wanted to say, if, Scott, if you could put together an outline of what you're intending to do along with copies of the signs that you've been using in other places.
Absolutely.
And that can go to highway and trails, and we can start to have that conversation.
I can absolutely provide you with any of that stuff. I just, I just want to mention one thing. Tread Lightly is not all about motorized recreation. It's about mountain biking and hiking access and shared access. It's not just the four-wheel-drive community. It's not just snowmobilers. It's, it's an all-inclusive thing. We want to be able to keep it open for all those different activities. I found it because I was in a Jeep, but that's not all of what Tread Lightly is. So I, we're here to help, and whatever form that comes in, we're willing to offer our support. So I'll send you all the information you'd like, and I can get the info from Travis about who I should send it with, and I can, I can take care of that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
As the moderator for the Trails Committee, Eric, you are aware of what we are talking about, too, to work with Travis and your, and your committee?
Absolutely. So it'll go in front of our committee at our next meeting on September 14th. We will not be holding any additional special meetings with that group before then, so our next scheduled meeting is September, Tuesday, September 14th.
Thank you. Okay, continuing with Travis, some guardrails on Ellis Brook Road.
Yep. I'd like to put up a new section of guardrail on the shut corner up on Ellis Brook when we, when we do pave that this fall. Be a 240-foot section of new guardrail, and it will come out of our, our guardrail budget.
So this is budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. And are there any questions about these new guardrails? Is, it's a place where there's accidents?
Yeah.
Dangerous?
Yeah. There have been multiple cars over the bank there over the years, and I've, with paving, now having that corner be paved, I really think it should.
You mean they're going faster?
Possibly. I mean, yeah, but.
So, yeah.
I'd really like to see some there for safety's sake, and I went out and got a couple of quotes from our normal two companies that we have done business with in the past, and I believe Jeanette brought along the numbers.
Yeah, I have the numbers right in front of me. Are there any questions about this? Sarah?
Is there, what's the pros-cons of using new versus used?
Price.
That's it? So a used rail is not inherently worse?
No. No, because it's, when the, say, for example, like, when the state come through and did all that stuff, those companies would take that rail and then sell it as used rail to a lot of the towns because it's still good and, you know, they're not going to sell you a bunch of junk that's rusted out and dented up, and they're going to sell you the pieces that are, they're just not shiny new pieces anymore, and they were due to be replaced, so they did, you know? So that's, that's actually going to be my recommendation, is that we go with Vermont Recreational.
Oh, by himself. I heard of going.
On the, on the purchase and installation of this guardrail.
Any other, any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Joe?
Yes, I think we should go with the used railing, because if we bought new railing and we can't get paid for the new railing, someone goes through it, type thing. We don't want to spend too much money. So I recommend going with the used rail that we can get now, not the one that we don't know if we can.
Yeah.
Do you want to make a motion?
I do make a motion that we buy the used rail from which company? I don't know which.
Vermont Recreational.
Vermont Recreational for the sum of, I don't have the number.
$46.50 installed.
$46.50 installed.
Second by Dan. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Aye.
All right. Great. Update on the flood assistance to New Fane.
Yes, so as many of you know, New Fane suffered a great loss of some roads on July 30th. That was a Friday. We had our stuff all patched up here in this town by 11:00 AM, and then we offered some help to New Fane, and it was just hourly wages and, and just truck use. No materials were used from our supply. And New Fane reached out to me within the next three days after and asked for rates and wages and man-hours and truck usage and rates and everything. So you guys should be seeing around a total of $3,700. $3,677.47 is what I have as an exact total that you should be receiving, along with a very nice thank you letter from the town, New Fane, for our assistance.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, the guys who came in and worked, too, because it was a day off. It was a Friday, so, thank you. And thank you for following up on the total, because I just didn't want to lose that number.
Absolutely.
And what's the update on the Town Hall ramp project? I'm guessing.
Jeanette's going to hold her head and cry.
What, you want to tell it?
I, I have been back and forth with multiple contractors, and I actually did meet with one today, so.
Excellent. Did you hear that, Joe?
I met with one.
I, I did hear that. So Travis, if you guys can hear me.
Yeah.
I did hear that, and I was actually just talking to the contractor.
Yeah.
Evans and Peter Verigut.
Yeah.
And they want to do it, they're just trying to get a price to us to do it, type thing, so that they can do it. But both of them have told me that they're willing to do it and committed to doing it. We just got to get it done, because it's ongoing too long, so they're going to work on it, type thing. So hopefully by the next meeting, we should have better numbers on the whole thing, and we can proceed forward with it.
I agree. I have another contractor that's, that's, I just keep missing him, and I believe he's going to show it, too, so we'll see.
Good. You got to get it done.
At least we get a couple of numbers, it'd be something to go by.
I appreciate your efforts reaching out to find people, because they weren't reaching out to help us.
No, they just didn't.
No. So thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else? Yes, who? Anybody?
I was going to.
Okay, go.
I was just going to speak. It's just not that big of a job, and it's just a coordination of, you know, the concrete and two other people working on it to get it done. And we just need to get those plans that Jeanette has, I think that two of them have looked at, and then be able to, you know, put something together so they can put it together and get it done, type thing. So hopefully we'll get something. I'll work on it, too, Travis. Thanks.
Anything else, Travis, for us?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So we have now flipped new business and unfinished business, and we're going to jump into unfinished business. We're going to revisit the Nacrasen Agreement, which is $24,000 for a 12-month agreement to continuing lobbying efforts on, about the waiting study and the waiting of our students, and it's from July 1st to June 30th, 2022. Adam's on, I see. Hi, Adam. So we discussed this last meeting, but we hadn't warned an expenditure, so we put it back on for this meeting for the expenditure. Are there any questions about this agreement? Are there any comments? Richard?
So you remember way back when we were a lot younger, and I had more hair, that, you know, this is something we've been working on for a long time, and, you know, we had our old comment that you don't turn a battleship on a dime. Well, I got to tell you, this year we saw a lot, and I think that battleship was kind of lined up and all set to get into that repair dock, you know? And I think this is, you know, this group did a lot to get us there. I think the coalition that formed it a lot, and I think it's good to have multiple avenues of, you know, working on all of our behalfes. And I think the amount of money we spent, if you just look at what, you know, the, getting rid of the, or having a moratorium or a pause on the excess spending penalty, what it did for just this town alone, very cheap money, so. And I tell you, I think the world of this guy compared to, you know, what we've done in the past, and I think a lot of it's, you know, a lot of it's done, a lot of it's the other lobbyists that work for the coalition, but together they did a great job for us. And I would say, since buzzy would probably be the only time it's settled in his grave when the town spends money, is when you spend money on this, you know, I would really urge the board to move this forward, personally.
Thank you. Any other comments? Does somebody want to make a motion that we enter into a contract for 12 months with the Nacrasen Group for $24,000 with the money coming from the Legal Defense Fund?
Soon moved.
Second by Scott. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You, Joe, were you an aye? Joe?
Yes, I am an aye.
Okay, unanimous. So I am going to sign this.
Thank you for the opportunity to work with the town and in partnership with the coalition. Your community in Wyndham County are bringing a lot of pressure to bear on this situation in the state capital.
Thank you, and I know you'll keep us updated as things progress through. So, yes, Richard?
I mean, this is all right. I request to make the quick.
Okay. So thanks, Adam, and keep us, keep us posted, and hopefully you'll be in the Capitol working this winter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rich, you have a question, a comment?
I was just wondering, could you skip forward B and go to C, and then go back to B, because I can kind of make another meeting and try to get back there for something at the end of the meeting.
Is the board okay if we go to the proposed pay scale for the Westover Fire Department?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're up. You're up, Richard.
So I think you all have a copy of it, and we discussed it, my evaluation, and I just, for some reason, thought it had been taken care of. I guess it had, but it needs an official signature.
So does anybody, probably the only people who have seen this is, are board members. Is that true? The fire department's seen this?
The officers have.
The officers have seen it. The members of the public probably haven't, but it's a pay scale that Rich has proposed. Rich, can you just speak to it just briefly?
Well, we, you know, when I took over as fire chief back in the dark days, I don't remember when, you know, we, we went to a pay system where previously there was just some pay for fire drills, and we went to a pay-for-call system. There was stipends for the officers, and then we also had special details. You have somebody that does the SCBA, they get a little bit more money for that, because that requires a specialized skill. It's not just something taking. because that requires a specialized skill, it's not just something taking anybody off the street and do. And then at the hourly rate, there's three steps, there's a, a beginning fireman, there is a fireman with at least two years' experience um, who's attended drills and training. And then there's also, um, people have completed firefighter one and then there's officers. And, um, we've had a pay raise in 2011 and then hopefully we've had one since then. Or, it says it on top of the sheet, I, I don't remember when the last one was, but I think it's quite a while ago. So I'm, I've asked that we, um, you know, give some substantial increases to officer stipends and also to the firemen at the hourly rate. Uh, and I'd like to, in the future, you know, keep up with, with it by, you know, recommending whatever the town is recommending that we, um, do each year and it'd be part of your, just your regular pay, um, schedule. The only other difference is, um, we did a few years ago, took over, and I can't remember when, um, the pay for the fire wardens, so that's a once-a-year payment. And I also have in there, um, town employees, I, I asked for, at my evaluation and, and over the last two years, if there's town employees that join the fire department, um, that they get a little bit of a bonus also. And I believe it's two hundred and fifty dollars. And I'm also looking to pay the officers stipends and that, the fire wardens and the, the, um, any town employees that stipend, in the beginning of December, so it's almost like a holiday bonus for them. And that's when they used to pay, a lot of the, the older guys liked it a lot. And then the select board wanted me to pay it at the end of the fiscal year, so I've been calling a payment in June. So I'd like to go back to the January payment if we could, or I mean, the December payment. And that's pretty much it.
So, um, I believe the last update of, of the fire department rates was in 2013.
There it is.
That's what it says here. So I'm going to really quickly read down this. Chief, nine thousand per year stipend. Deputy Assistant Chief, three thousand. Captains, two thousand. Lieutenants, one thousand. Officers, twenty-two dollars an hour. Firefighters, depending on the, the grade, is nineteen to twenty-one. Um, specialized work, uh, is twenty-four dollars an hour. Billable fire call, fire calls, thirty dollars an hour for fire officers, twenty-five for firefighters. And regular fire calls, thirty-nine dollars, thirty cu- dollars per call for all members. And the other, the rest is the two hundred and fifty and things like that, so.
And I, I did forget one thing too. We're going to, for the fire calls, what we're going to do is, now that we're doing search and rescue too, um, some of our guys wind up going out for like overnight. And the thirty dollars is, the fire call pay is for the first hour. And then if they're going to be out for over an hour and a half, then I'm going to pay them their hourly rate.
That's, that's in here.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's a big, that is a change, that's one of the changes we discussed, because it's tough, you know, with, with a lot of the guys and, and, you know, some of them are taken off from work. Some of them don't get paid, so we thought we're encouraging them to go out, we're, you know, the town's encouraging a lot of trail work. People get lost on trails, Andrew has to go get them and, you know, I want them to be compensated as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the proposed rate for the Westover Fire Department? Sarah?
Do we, did you put together, I mean, I understand you don't have any idea how many calls you're going to have. But based on sort of an average year, do you know how much of an increase in your budget this represents?
I don't, no. I feel that we're definitely going to be able to cover it because we've been way under budget on salaries for a long time. Um, a long time ago, back when Mary Lou was here, Mary Lou Phil, Norm Rosenberg, and I see after the four, Bobby Edwards, um, all met downstairs and you look at older budgets, like, you know, everything was separated out. Like, I, I just remember the boost part because I was looking at it and it's like, you know, portable radios were separate from ammunition and then was separate from. And what, um, they wanted to do was they want to just have less line items, so they combined a lot of things. And I'd like to, and I got to talk to Marco and, um, Jeanette about it. But I would like to separate out the stipends from the, the training, from the fire calls, from, and even search and rescue, so that we have a better feel for that, so when you ask me that question, it's, it's right there in front of you. It won't increase, you know, the bottom line, but it'll just break those up. And I almost think, and I thought I talked to Marco once about this, because I've been meaning to bring this to you for a couple of years and it keeps getting, you know, forgotten, pushed aside, whatever. I don't know, we can just do it within this program we have and we don't even have to separate the line items out, but.
You guys can figure that out.
Oh, is it broken out? Because I know it's separate on the pay checks, but it's not in budget.
Richard, when would you like this to start? Can we start September 1st?
Well, I'd like to start for the paid, September 1st, the beginning of September's pay is for August, that's when I would like it to start. So it would start for the calls and the training in August, but we don't pay till September. If you guys want to wait till September 1st, then I'll bump it, you know, it'll be October 1st checks.
Yeah, but it's for, I, I think we need a clear start date for when this starts.
I'd like it to start August 1st.
Does anybody have a problem with that? And you have a question, comment?
I have another comment. The idea of moving the bonus to the middle of the fiscal year when we have no way of guaranteeing the person's going to stay for the whole year. I do have issue with that. I feel like it should stay at the end of the fiscal year, which is when we all get paid, um, our big check every year. And I think, I think just because there's no way to know that the person's going to stay for the whole year and you're not going to be able to get money back from someone after you've given it to them.
So how, how about a compromise, because it's not really written in there, that we pay half and half?
It says payable in December.
So can we cross it out and put, you know, six months, you know, pay, pay half and half, July through December?
Sure, if we can start at September 1st.
Yeah, no, we will, we'll, we'll just pay for the three months or whatever.
Andy?
So, uh, I'm involved with the fire department and stand competitive by this upfront. But, I'm not a fireman, I'm search and rescue, I go on way less calls than the firemen. But, I have a pager and I hear the pager go off in the middle of the night. And I think to myself, Paul is getting out of bed right now and rushing to the station.
I didn't know he was in bed.
To show him, okay.
Paul's leaving his house.
Paul's ending his current activity. And he is, and he's going to the firehouse and, and getting in the truck and showing up and serving the people at Dover in the middle of the night and I really don't want to. And, um, and I think, I think these guys deserve this, so, that, we don't have enough of them currently, we need more. And if we can entice them, um, spending the kind of money I heard there, um, we need to do that. And just, uh, to throw another idea out there, what if you don't get your pay bonus until after your first year of service? But you have it in December for a Christmas bonus, but you have to wait until you've been proving yourself for a year. That might.
Yeah, because unless you're paying them six months after, I apologize, I should have, I.
Yes.
With Mr. Roberts rule sitting right in front of me. Um, so, but you're not saying that they work for a year and then six months goes by before they get their bonus, you're saying?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay.
You have to work a year without a bonus to prove that you are committed. And then the second year of employment, you get your bonus in December and every year thereafter. But you've proven that you're sticking around at that point. Just an idea, ignore it if you want.
Richard?
You know, just kind of like, I don't know if you guys should run it back, when I used to work with Randy more than I do now. And we had this discussion about health insurance and we had the HRA, whichever one, the money went to the, the employee. And we were concerned the employee might work till, you know, start January 1st and January 2nd he may quit. And he got the HRA and I don't know if you remember my comment there. If a person does that and takes money and just, you know, and leaves January 2nd, probably benefiting because it's probably not an employee you want. And, you know, these guys, the officers I have now, Mike Kescott's been an officer for twenty-five, thirty years, Mickey's been thirty years, Tim and, and Ian have been at least three or forty years. You know, it's, the guys don't just, you know, jump in there, take the money and run. And, you know, it's, we're not talking to the keys to the city and, you know, it's a few thousand dollars. The chief gets paid every month anyways because you, that's how you guys wanted it because it was more money. So just effectively, the assistant chief on down.
This is their stipends?
Their stipends, yes.
So right now, explained, we only pay them at the end of the fiscal year?
Right.
Okay.
Well, in June, so.
Yeah.
When I do the main payroll sometime from the beginning of June, then I pay the stipends. This is right, you know, if I wait till July, then it's a new fiscal year. And then I would just be screwing myself on the budget.
Okay. So there's a couple of proposals on the table here for the, particularly for the, the officers. Do we want to do it a split? I mean, there are, I, I agree, there's a lot of, a lot of work with the fire department. I don't know that we're putting ourselves in jeopardy by, by giving them December and June.
I could support December.
Sarah can support December and June. Scott's shaking his head.
No.
Dan? Joe? Joe? Joe?
Go back to your phone.
Okay. So everybody here appears to do a split December and June, half and half?
December and June, sorry, I was trying to get the mic unzoom.
So if we make that.
Excuse me.
Yes, go.
So are you talking just the stipends?
And are we talking the town employee bonus too?
I guess you would have to, yeah. Again, that's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, that's not, not much.
And you know what, if a town employee takes it in December and then leaves, again, we may have been better off if they did that. So I would, I would recommend not the town employee stipend.
Okay. So we're talking officers excluding the chief? Because you get yours. So I'm going to add that in there.
I'm sorry, we didn't have that discussion during the evaluation, so I didn't know that was a concern.
What else? Any other comments about this? Does someone want to make a motion, a motion that we approve this amended pay rate?
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the Westover Fire Department pay proposal uh, as amended with the deputy slash assistant chief captains and lieutenants receiving their stipends split half in December and half in June. And all others are paid. The, the bonus for town employees will remain payable in December for two hundred and fifty.
Um. Yes.
And then the other payroll will, the pay scale will change, the pay plan will remain the same.
And when is it going to take effect?
Taking effect September 1st.
For the payroll for September 1st?
These new pay scales, I think she's saying takes effect September 1st. Does that make sense? Jeanette, shall I write a note on this too?
No, I've been having to do that several times, but that's okay.
Somebody want?
I can try to email you what I meant to say.
This, well. Does somebody want to second that?
Second.
Joe? Dan has seconded it?
Yes.
Any discussion? Joe?
No discussion.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Ricky, can you come in later, Ray?
Uh, yeah.
So, you know, I appreciate Andy's support and if Andy was listening to this pager, you know, on Saturday, Paul and I had three calls strategically spaced throughout the day, we screwed up the entire day. And, you know, I'm, there's one Christmas, we had like seven calls and, and that was one where one, our lieutenant decided somebody was too dumb, go in the toaster oven and took it away from them. The second time we went there, because they burned their toast, the alarm went off. Um, you know, so that you guys do go out a lot and, and I appreciate you guys recognizing that with this new pay scale. And I, I believe all the firemen will be.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to copy some stuff out of the.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming and good luck being from Georgetown and we'll see if you get back here. Uh, where am I now? So, uh, I am going to jump back to item B. Revisit the personnel policy concerning conflict of interest nepotism. Okay, I know that there's some department heads, um, that want to say some things about this. So I think that, uh, we should just go in order, raise your hands and start discussing what concerns you have with what we proposed, uh, what we threw out there as a place to start, uh, a couple of meetings ago. I know Randy's looking at me.
Yeah, because I wasn't sure if, um, I guess if there was anything useful when I saw this, I guess I was, really caught off guard a little bit per se. Because I didn't know if it was something that Sarah was presenting or something that you were working on.
I was going to, although we said that the LCT document was.
Okay, so, so I guess a couple of questions is, are you guys taking a vote on something on the town?
No, I feel that we need to hear feedback and all, think about it and, uh, see what, what you guys have to say, because I don't know what that is.
So, um, I guess my question number one is which VLC document? Is that the VLC document that, um, that long one right there that you're showing me? Okay, it's not the VLCT, um, policy on nepotism itself. It's something that, that I had gave to you, um, I think I forwarded up to the select board months ago, maybe a couple of you, which was the one that I had sent on the request of Laura Sebelia. So that's why I wasn't sure which VLC document you were referring to. So, but if I, if you're saying that it's, this one that was dated July 20th, right? Is that the one you're talking about? Oh, no, I'm sorry, who's that?
Nope.
Just like, wait a minute.
Yeah, this is like section six, conflict of interest and section 10 nepotism from there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, so that's the one you're talking about. Of the doc or, essentially, right? So I guess, um, just need to take a deep breath here, so. I still don't know why we're going down this group, number one. Okay? I did, and I have a bunch of things that are highlighted right here. This is from the IACP, International Association of Chiefs of Police, who puts out tons of policies. They did not do one on nepotism and the, uh, employee, um, fraternization. Um, and what it is, because it's such a hot topic and stuff like that. And talking to numerous law enforcement, um, executives. I highlighted a few things, um, you know, and, and in short, you know, nepotism is already one, you know, to show any kind of favoritism or anything like that is already against the Civil Rights Act. You know, number one. I'm going to be really brief, because I could discuss this for a good half hour easily. There's things in here, uh, having one, you could also be a violation of the Fourteenth Amendment rights. Okay, this is, we're going back, back and forth, um.
Can, can you share that document with us?
Um, I had, well, it was afforded to you, so it goes, it really goes back and, and forth a lot. And it goes, you know, and a lot of it, they talk more about, I think, um, uh, sexual relationships more than anything else when they start talking about nepotism and a lot of this stuff. And then some of the things go, such policies have, may be deemed valid if the court finds that the rule serves a legitimate employment purpose. Or if an agency has documentation revealing that it's had problems in this area in the past and that the policy is designed to correct those specific types of problems. However, courts are less likely to rule favorably if a department is simply implementing a policy to guard against the possibility of future problems in this county. Okay, so right is there, and then there's something in here also from the Eighth Circuit and stuff like that. So I can send that to you. DORPD has not had an issue. I've talked to two of you already about this and why I think this is coming forefront. Not going to discuss it in a public meeting, executive session, we can go there. DORPD has had no problems or issues whatsoever with that last paragraph that I just mentioned in the past when, and I don't like to bring up names, but when the gallops were here. Okay? We had no issues in the past or currently. We had no issues in the past or currently with the current employees that are there. And if it was such a concern, where was the concern over seven and a half years ago, when two of them started? Why now, when there's a third? Again, I'll go to the executive session and discuss that, will you? With that being said, and then some of this thing with the most current one, and, and you gotta remember, Dover is very small, and a lot of these policies and stuff like that are to a much bigger agency. Okay? I can come up right now with a few scenarios, even with any of the language that says one cannot supervise another one. I'm in Florida, Mike's out of town. Okay? We have officers that are working, that are related right now. Okay? The way our policies and the way our things are done is if supervisor, i.e. Mike or I are not available, or if you have two of them working, you, the decision needs to be made. It's the highest ranking, or if they're all basically ranked the same, then whoever's had the longest tenure within the department. So, I could have two of them working, someone needs to supervise the other one. It's never been an issue, never has been, and I don't see it will be. And in some of this language, and something Andy just mentioned, and I kinda giggled a little bit earlier when he was talking about the Hathaway Trail. Okay? You open up a can of worms, okay, by presenting this stuff. Again, I don't know why, I think the timing is very suspect of it. So, if you're gonna adopt something, I would really like to see the language of it before it is adopted and before it goes anywhere. Because of the scenario that I just mentioned, that I could have two of them working, one needs to supervise the other one and say, hey, this is what you gotta do, and so on and so forth. Most recently, the hiring of the third person, the person who's done backgrounds in the, in the past, was not any part of that background investigation on this last one that I'd hired. So, it's already, we have been doing everything right. We've never had any of these policies, never had an issue with it, and now, in part of that paragraph that I just read, it could come back and bite us in the ass. Because we're doing something that we have not had an, an issue with. And they've talked about, in this thing also, about documentation. Okay? If we've had an issue, then that's documented, then the courts are at to side by that when you do something like this. So, there's pros and cons, it's even pros and cons in this four-page thing that I just read a part of it for. I think that's all I'm gonna say at this point, other than whatever is done, I would like to see it written entirely before any other decisions made.
I think that this was more of a, just kind of, we did not ask for a weigh-in on this, and so this is more a, a opportunity for anybody to weigh in on this. I don't know if any other department heads want to weigh in on this. I would think that the ones most affected would be the highway, or maybe the fire department. So, I think that we need to listen to what everybody's saying. I haven't had anybody reach out to me, except for Laura, asking for this policy. Nobody's said, you really need to do this? I've had nothing from the public, I don't know if any other board member has.
But, I would like to say something.
Okay, let Sarah say something.
That, I know this is, I know this is, that some people are not gonna feel comfortable doing this, but I really think that the initiation of this needs to be put aside and look at the issue as its own issue. And the fact, Randy stopped with the head shaking. Because it's not, it, it has revealed a larger issue, and that is that this town does not have a conflict of interest or nepotism policy at all. It only applies to volunteers. It doesn't apply, that's what I read. It covers volunteers or committee members, but it doesn't cover town employees. And so, when I read that, the way I read it, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, but if that's the way I read it, then I think that's something that the town should be investigating for the town, not for one department over another. It should, I don't believe that this should ever be applied selectively. If we're going to have a policy, it should be for everybody who works for the town.
Travis?
I was under that pressure too. I also got forwarded the copies from, of the proposed changes or additions to that policy. I had then passed it off to my guys, and I didn't hear no, I heard no feedback back, and I have no problem with any of it. I, town certified it. I have no issue.
Does anybody else have any other comments about, anything about conflict of interest or nepotism policy, or no policy, or how we should proceed?
So, the only thing I wasn't gonna, that I didn't say, because again, it's, you know, I've had people who, who started reading about this, and you say, yeah, and I, I haven't had anybody from the public come up and say, it's been an issue. But I had people from the public that have seen, that it's been raised, and something, and they don't get it. They go, why? And I have to also bite my tongue at that point. So, again, I just, I would just need to say, I'm not saying it's probably, there's certain things I would probably be going for it, and again, it's, it's the board's decision. I just don't, I just don't think it's right. I think if it was two of, I'm just gonna stop there.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Dan?
I think in regards to nepotism, the heads of the department know enough to hire people that are not their relatives. And I feel that they know how to run their departments, and if there's any conflicts of interest, it would be obvious to everybody. And I think they do a good job. So, I don't, I have tremendous confidence in the highway and the police and the fire department to do what they have to do.
So, the select board hires people. Department heads recommend that we are elected by the public to, that's one of our jobs, we hire people. So, it's not like Travis is gonna hire somebody who is related to somebody else, and we're not gonna know about it. So, there is a check and balance there. We try to hire the most qualified applicants, and I think it shows. And I don't want to do anything that's gonna, you know, handcuff us in that, literally. I want, I wanna have the best employees. So, this is a kind of a hard topic to know which way to go. It is a really small town, and the pool, the labor pool, we all know is really small. So, I think all the board members should take this away and really think about if this is something that we really want to do. We do have this one policy that does cover a lot of the peripheral type people and, and the elected boards. But it doesn't, it doesn't cover our employees. So, but I, I really like people to really put some thought into this, because this is, this is a big change potentially, and, but know that Randy isn't gonna hire anybody without coming to the board. And some of those questions were asked multiple times, and we felt we hired the best applicant. So, and are we better off having this particular, you know, third officer from a family, or having no officer, or having another applicant who was nowhere near as qualified? So, those are all things that we need to really think about. I think it's really important that we have a fully staffed town, and it's harder and harder to find those people. Dan?
I may modify what you said, the best available applicant, and not always available.
Could you say that again? We, I think we missed that, Dan.
The best available applicant. It's very hard to find people today. So, I remember Bobby Edwards in my store one day talking about one time he needed to hire a base, and they had 50 applicants, and said there were only two that were possibly to hire. So, part of their judgment is to pick available best applicant, and they do that.
Sarah?
I would just like to reiterate that a conflict of interest policy does not in any way say you can't hire people who are related. It gives you a structure for how behavior within a group where that relationship exists is to function. So, it doesn't preclude hiring, Travis hiring his brother, or us agreeing to hire Travis. It has to do with how they function with each other in the workplace. So, it doesn't, none of this, the way I'm reading it anyway, says we, we can't hire, we can't have a department made up of five people from the same family, or five people who have a relationship. It's how they function inside that department that this is what, that, that is what this talks about.
This particular conflict of interest policy, which was adopted a long time ago, 2007, and nobody on this board is currently, who was on the board then. I'm not sure if everybody's seen this. This is not a nepotism policy though. This is, this is a conflict of interest policy. And it, it's subtle, but it's different. So, those are things you need, we need to think about. If we adjust this, will that cover everything? Do we need a nepotism policy? Do we not? So, I, I really, I'm really, I keep wavering back and forth on this, on different ideas and how it could work, but I think we all need to really think about it, and I'm serious. The board should really sit, step back and, and read everything that we, and Randy's gonna send us some more stuff, and really come back with a really clear idea of what they want to do, what they don't want to do, and how we, what we do. I don't know the answer.
I'll also send you, and then Sarah has, because she has copies of all our policies, because I will include in that that the police department already has an ethics code conduct policy.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Does anybody else have anything to say about this, this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. Okay. We are now gonna do new business. Consider continuing the hybrid meeting model, masks in public buildings. So, I thought we were gonna continue the hybrid meeting model. I, I wasn't, I thought that at this point, we were gonna continue. Who knows what the fall is gonna throw at us, and I think it's just better for us to continue this. Has anybody not agreed to that? Board members? Okay? Okay. So, I, I think it's important for the public to be able to see what's going on. I know Wilmington is not doing theirs, they're only doing theirs in person now. So, I think it's important that we have the opportunity, and honestly, if people can't, can't attend a meeting, I'd rather have two people on Zoom than only have three select board members here. It's not as great as having five here, guys, but it's better than having, than, that you're attending. I appreciate that. So, is there any other questions about the hybrid model? The second part of this is masks in public buildings. So, I assume this came from administration?
Well, it came from me, which is because I saw it, that Rattleboro, I saw it in the paper, that Rattleboro had come back to masks in their town offices, and since then, I've heard of several other towns that are doing the same.
So, okay.
I was just gonna ask, what's the feeling of the people working in the building? What's the comfort level of the people working in the building?
I don't want to go back to my mask, but.
I, I think you, you guys need to make that, I mean, and we pretty much left it up to you guys to begin with. If you feel you need to, you, I heard today the library is asking for proof of vaccination. So, I, I think it's really up to you guys. I, I, I don't work in this building, I come in here a few hours a week at the most. But you, this is your work environment, and if you feel uncomfortable, I think it's up to any business who wants to do that. Sarah?
I would just say that if the people who work here decide that they would like to have a mask standard, that the select board needs to vote to, to support them in that. That they, that they have our backing.
We, well, I guess we're still under the state of emergency too. So, but now that we're not, fine. I mean, I don't have a problem putting our support behind that. Taddy?
Um, and Joseph, Joseph also.
Do you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll do Joe, and then I'll do Jeanette.
Okay. Um, I think that, you know, we, the employees who are in the building can meet together and discuss where our comfort level is. We have two kinds of areas. We have a public area in the front office where people come in and go, and then several of us also have private offices where the doors are closed or all of that. So, there's sort of a difference in how that masking will may, maybe affect us or other people. And part of that question is, should we go deeper into an emergency? Do we go back into a lock the doors, appointments only type of a structure? I think that may be a little time coming, but do we go back into that? And I think we need to kind of talk amongst ourselves and determine.
Okay. Joe? Joe, you're next.
You, you were unmuted, now you're muted.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry about that, I didn't know it was unmuted. So, anyways, it should be up to us as a select board to make that decision with what our employees that are working with in that building. But again, if we decide to do one thing for one building, we have to decide to do it among all of the other departments. We can't just decide on just one area to do that in. That is my opinion, just going forward, just in case something goes wrong, or something does happen, and we need to be consistent throughout the whole town with the policy.
Jeanette?
Okay. I guess I'm just bringing this up, I've just, Laura had sent out a new update, the, to wear masking doors in public if you're in an area of substantial or high transmission, which apparently Wyndham County is, is falling into that now. So, I guess, I don't know if it's just something we're gonna wait on the governor to decide whether it's statewide, or we're just gonna keep it on a town-by-town basis, or business-by-business basis. I guess, I'm just.
Well, thank you, I think it's a good discussion to have. Thank you for putting it on. Andy?
Uh, yeah, so, the first time around, we sort of listened to the health updates that the governor was giving. Vermont has the best numbers in the country right now. I think that leadership has, I think that between the governor and Dr. Levine, they've done a great job recommending. I, one of my main focuses in implementing the precautions that I did early on, with making our office open by appointment only, putting up all the plexiglass, masking, and so forth. One of my main concerns was the comfort of the other employees in the building. And, you know, the comfort of the folks who need to use our land records. And, basically, I'm thinking that we're gonna go back to masks in my office. At some point, probably in the near future, I look at the news, and I think that's where we're going, with the new variant and the cases on the rise. I think it's something we need to think about, you know, Jeanette and, and I can talk about it, you know, and, and see where our comfort level is. And I feel definitely comfortable that Jeanette and I can make a decision for our office. Our office is the most public office by far in the town of Dover. That's where everybody from Connecticut comes, when they come to Dover, they come to our office, it's tax season. We are the most exposed, Jeanette and I, and I would like to be able to make that decision in the office with Jeanette, when we're, when we, we feel we need to, and I appreciate the offer of you guys backing us up.
So, just keep us informed. Last time, we didn't, Joe, we didn't make it a, a. Last time, we didn't, Joe, we didn't make it a blanket. Different, different departments ran things their way that worked for them. They're all different. The police department has a, a clear locked out space where people cannot go in. There's a glass. Um, to me, that's a very safe zone that you don't have to, you know, interact with people necessarily. The, the road crew is gonna have to make their own decisions, um, about how they do their work. I think everybody's work is different, and everybody's office is different. And I think we need to make those in, decisions that work for everybody, um, that work for the employees there and for the people they serve.
Well, not to be a dead horse, but yes, I wouldn't feel comfortable mandating that they have to do it, but I would want to do whatever we can to support all of the people that work for us. And if that meant that you wanted this here, I'd be totally behind it. But as for putting it, making it every office wide, um, not for it.
So, yeah. Joe's got his hand, hold on. Joe?
So anyways, let's re-look at this in two weeks, but I'm thinking that we should probably do what the C D, CDC recommends, and we'll go from that thing. But I don't think that we can do, one department does one thing and another department does another thing. That's just my take on it.
Well, we never, in, in the beginning of COVID and all through it, we never laid out the guidelines for each individual department. Am I wrong? So, um, so, I don't know that now is the appropriate time, but we can certainly talk about that. Jeanette?
Well, what about the mask resolution that you passed?
But that was throughout the town. That was for businesses. I, I'm not prepared to start doing that for individual businesses right now. Um, I'm talking about the town, the town and how, but every, as I just said, every single department, office, Tabby's office versus your office, it all, it's all different. So, um, we'll have to figure something out. And Dan?
Uh, Food and Lodging recommends in restaurants, uh, counters that you use sneeze streams. If you don't have them, you should wear masks. And obviously, my coffee shop is just like the town office. The people come in all the time. So, that's a recommendation from Food and Lodging. So, I think, obviously, that's something that Andy and Jeanette can follow, because people are in their face all the time.
Okay. Well, Marco?
Right, so I'm part of this office too, um, but we're, like you said, we're kind of separate. But, like, we have people now coming in with their tax bills, coming in from wherever. The Delta variant is raging. I just heard today before I came here that on CNN that the, I think the Pfizer vaccine is now 46% effective at this stage of the game, you know, as opposed to when it was like 80%, when they were first giving it out. So, I'm afraid. I'm afraid of people coming into my office.
Do you have a Dropbox for your?
I do, but a lot of times, people come in, they want to sit and visit, and how much do I owe? If you have a pen, you know, it's like, I just, we're gonna have to put aside, like, we're gonna have to figure something out so people aren't, you know, parking themselves, you know, where they just encourage them to drop.
Last year, they paid their taxes via Dropbox.
Right.
So, they can probably do it again this year.
Yeah.
So, if, and, yeah, I mean, if you want to do that and say, if you really need to talk to me, give me a ring or call me for an appointment, and we'll go.
I mean, right now, you know, we'll see how it goes over the next week or so, you know, work together with Andy, but, you know, what he does up front, but.
I think you guys did it very well through the, the pandemic so far, and I'm sure we will figure out the best way for everybody to work as comfortably as possible, but also to stay safe. Because I don't think that Tabby, if she's in there with her door shut, she needs to put a mask on to work all day long.
Right, yeah.
You know, so maybe.
Or like, if people are coming to see me, they're queuing up in the hallway, and she, you know, she's exposed to it. So, it's just, it, we're trying, we're trying to really, we want to manage it without.
They're about the same thing, Bill. I mean, they're coming to see me as well, the plans and all of that, and I don't want them operating outside your door, the same thing. So, we'll.
Yeah, you guys, you guys will figure it out, unfortunately. I'm sorry we're going back this way.
It is what it is.
It is. Thank you. Thank you, Jeanette, for putting that on the agenda. Okay. Uh, the reappointment of the town health officer, who is Tabby Friedman. So, is that?
I make a motion that we reappoint.
Is that a one-year appointment?
Three.
Three. And it doesn't coincide with the administrator. It's, it's off by about a couple of months. The, the zoning administrator. Yeah. Okay, so where do you go?
I make a motion that we reappoint Tabby Friedman as the town health officer for a period of three years.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Now, we're gonna get to economic development. Thank you for hanging around there, Eric.
Absolutely, riveting stuff. Okay, so we're gonna start, it didn't get on here, but I'm just gonna give you a brief update on the Dover Launch Business Plan competition. Applications are currently open. Our business, um, brainstorming session has been moved to August 31st, and will happen from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Deerfield Bar and Bottle, where there will be light refreshments and a cash bar. Um, you've probably seen our ads, uh, the posters hanging around town and beyond, uh, running in the DVAL News. There was a story in the DVAL News on the program. Um, we've also been on BT Digger, which is sending people to our website. Um, I, I can see the traffic coming. We were also featured on Ma Business Magazine, uh, on their website, Twitter and Facebook today as well. So, the word is getting out there. Um, I've had some calls, and it's very promising. Um, moving forward from that, we have this proposal in front of us from our good friend, uh, Peter Case, at Peter Fish Case, at, um, The Peak 101, 9 and 107, and Great Eastern Radio, to provide us with, um, some, some radio advertising, which, um, in our opinion, we believe we should spend the money to advertise on the radio with them. It is our, really our only local radio station, and they also reach over to Keene, um, with their bands as well. Um, but along with this, Peter has proposed that, uh, The Peak kicking in an additional $5,000 to the winner in free radio advertising. Now, what they're looking for out of this is not a recognition of dual sponsorship or any of those things, but just to say that this additional money would be coming from The Peak to give them those radio ads. In my opinion, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer, but I wanted to put it in front of you guys.
So, I was just, I had one question about this. 5,000, is it a match? Is it just straight up 5,000? Is it a contract they have to sign for, uh, or is it just the winner gets $5,000, no strings attached advertising?
Yeah, there's, there's no match advertising. He is literally prepared. He, he, in my conversations with him, has expressed, you know, his desire to use the radio station to help businesses as much as possible. And he's been doing that throughout the pandemic, you know, in the Valley and beyond. And he said, you know, I really, I think it's an amazing thing that the town of Dover is doing. And any way that we can help, we want to help. So, this, this would literally be the, the Great Eastern Radio, um, company and The Peak handing the winner, you know, $5,000 worth of advertising to use on the, on that station.
Any, any comments? Sarah says that's incredibly generous.
It really is.
I think it's, uh, a really sweet deal that we have more to give to whoever's gonna do a business within Dover. So, I say we go forward with it. And it's not bad for us to advertise that we're doing this and spending some money to advertise so we get more applicants within it.
So, um, Dan, are you good with it?
Yep.
Everybody, yeah?
That's awesome, and that, would we also include that in some of our, would we try and like add that into our, here, there's $20,000, and you get an additional 5,000 in advertising? Get that out there?
Yep.
Yeah?
Absolutely, we can do that.
Yeah.
We should.
All right. Um, I think that we're all good with, uh, accepting, well, we were gonna buy some radio ads anyway, and accepting $5,000, uh, generous donation from The Peak is great.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, item B, ARPA funding updates. We received our first payment on the ARPA funding, uh, from the state. Our first payment was, uh, Marco, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, uh, 55,000 and change for the first payment. Um, and I think we receive our second payment, uh, next year.
Nice.
Uh, that's all, Marco has that all set aside in a separate account, you know, and, and so we're all set there. Um, the town of Dover website, so they have, they have finished migrating all of the information and meetings and minutes and agendas from the current website to the new website. Myself, Jeanette, um, and I was gonna speak to Tabby and, uh, and Shannon will be there as well. On Friday, the 27th, we have a two and a half hour training session on the new website. So, we are extremely close to having our new website live. I will have that in front of you guys ASAP.
Awesome.
Okay, and then the last piece. We held an emergency, not an emergency, but a special Dover Trails and Recreation Committee meeting last night. Um, it was a lengthy one to discuss, uh, the VORAT grant. So, the VORAT grant is, uh, through this, through the ARPA funding at the federal level and down to the state level. Um, it, the, I don't remember the acronym, I apologize. So, the VORAT grant is, basically, the state has $5.1 million that they're looking to divvy up into 20 to 25 projects, um, to, in terms of trails and recreation. So, we had a discussion last night. SOVTA had been moving forward with the application, um, you know, and doing a lot of the legwork. We just wanted to have this trails meeting to make sure that the town, um, was a part of this decision as well, because the, the grant they're going for is for Horse Hill, which is absolutely 100% a town-owned property. Um, so, a motion came out of that meeting, which I will read to you guys now. Uh, "The committee voted unanimously to recommend that the select board submit a letter of interest for the VORAT grant with the town of Dover as the lead applicant and responsible for the management and dispersal of funding." Does anyone have any questions for me on what that looks like?
No, I don't think. Anybody? Okay.
So, just to be clear, we would absolutely be, you know, working with SOVTA on, on the project. However, we would be listed as the main applicant. And any decision-making about how that money is spent would go through the town and not the nonprofit.
That is clear to me.
Okay.
So, um, I think that this board, you want to make, do we want to make a motion that we pursue this? Or do you just want to have a consent?
Why don't we make a, a motion?
Okay.
If you don't mind, the application is due by the 27th, so I'd rather there just wasn't any gray.
I, I make a motion that we, uh, go forward with the grant, with the town overseeing the funds, whatever amount that it may be that you guys are looking for.
Second.
Okay, second. Um, so basically, uh, what Eric just read from the, the Trails and Rec Committee is what you're, you made as your motion.
Removing that motion.
Correct? Joe? Joe?
Yes, yes, Vicki, that is correct.
Okay. And Dan, you are seconding that as well?
That's correct.
Andy?
And just to be clear, not to beat a dead horse, but perhaps to save an ashing of teeth later, that includes that the town will be the lead applicant on the application, correct?
Correct.
That was part of the motion, yeah.
Yes.
It wasn't, but, yes.
Didn't it say that, Eric?
It did, but Joe didn't say that.
No, but we, we've, we've gone back to the original.
Joe's motion is a copy of the motion.
I want it to be really clear.
Yeah, really clear. That's why.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, Eric?
I will literally be sending this motion to Jeanette as soon as you guys vote, so that she has the exact wording of how it needs to be written.
Great. Good. Thank you. Um, any other comments about this? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That was unanimous. Thank you. Okay, that's it for economic development? All right, thank you. I know that was a long trails meeting last night, so, um, I watched it. Um, I thought it was gonna be quicker, but it wasn't, so that's fine. Um, thank you. Consent agenda, we need to approve the minutes of August 3rd, 2021. Uh, somebody want to make a motion?
Move that we approve the minutes of August 3rd.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I don't.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
Aye.
Sarah was absent. We also need to approve the warrants of August 7th for $203,335.94.
So, moved.
Second.
Joe and Dan have not seen the warrants.
So, um, would you like to make that second? So, uh, since you haven't seen the warrants, they, you can always stop in and see the warrants if you want to, if you're gonna zoom in.
Yeah, I will, uh, check the warrants out tomorrow.
Well, we're gonna vote on them now, so. All right, but three of us in this room have seen the warrants, so I think that, um.
That's fine, I abstain.
I abstain.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep. Okay, now we're going to go to the FYIs. We've got a couple more concerts coming. Saturday, I mean, Sunday, the 22nd, Three Way Street. Sunday, the 29th, Surly Temple. And on September 5th, we have Patty Carpenter and the Dysfunctional Family Jazz Band, which is the final one of the season. And do we have any liaison reports?
No, I don't.
Yeah, uh, um, just a quick update on the sign. I've been talking with the people at the library. Um, I've been talking with, uh, Bev and Dennis Tier. And they are going to come up with a proposal. They're supposed, uh, they're gonna try and have it done today, but they've been really busy. Um, sent them some pictures, and I briefly mentioned to Travis that we might need to get, they had proposed getting new posts if we were gonna try and add some like rainbow thing on there. Um, but he has a picture, he's going to draft something up. And, um, Travis said that if we need to get new posts, we could use those other posts in some other capacity, and it's not like they would go to waste. Uh, so, there's progress, but we're on Vermont time for getting that done. All right.
Okay. And Jeanette? Uh, jumping back, do you want me to sign this form, uh, recommending Tabby as the health officer? Because it says Chair of the Select Board.
Yes, please.
Um, I didn't see this before.
Oh, okay.
That was my bad. And is there any other liaison reports? Okay, we're gonna go into executive session with Highway right now. So, and I, well, we've got a special wording of that one.
The language reads, "Move to enter executive session for evaluation of a town employee, inviting the road commissioner, office manager, and legal counsel to join the board."
Yes. And so, since Rich is not here, we are not gonna do that right now. We'll do it at another meeting. So, Rich is not gonna be invited to this, this was something different. Rich Warner. He was, I hated, I said that in the beginning, there was a contractual thing.
Right. Rich is.
Now he's off. Off now.
Good night.
So, um, did, did, did you make that motion to go into executive session? Scott has seconded, all in favor of going into executive session?
Aye.
Aye.